Good evening, buenas noches. Can we have a motion to reconvene into open session, please?
All motion.
Second?
All second.
At 7:16 PM?
Roca, Irenae, Palace?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Gonzalez? Absent with notice. Caballero?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Dranth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Nos paramos para el juramento a la bandera, por favor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here or present? Jimenez?
Here.
Steinfeld, here. Butler?
Here.
Caballero?
Here.
Dranth?
Here.
Palace?
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Gueda Jimenez, the president of the school board here with District 100 here in Berwyn. To my left is Dr. Mary Havis, our superintendent. Muy buenas noches a todos. Gracias por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Gueda Jimenez, la presidenta de la mesa directiva del Distrito 100 de Berwyn. Para nuestra izquierda es la doctora Mary Havis, nuestra superintendent. Gracias por estar aquí.
All right. Good evening. It's nice to see such a good crowd out there tonight for, I'm assuming most of us are here to hear from Piper. So we are very excited to, oh. We are excited to invite up for the school spotlight tonight Eileen Piper Simpson, Jackie Carstens, Michelle Maggus, Elise Ivetic, Gladiola Mendez, Kathy Paoli, Carla Schwartz, if we can invite you all up for this presentation.
I really loved to see when you were all walking up. There were some people representing with green tennis shoes, green sweaters, other assorted green, green folders, I noticed. So, green tissue paper. Thank you for representing Piper. I really appreciate that. Again, good evening and thank you for welcoming us to share some of the important and wonderful things that are going on at Piper. This year, Piper is 100 years old. We celebrate 100 years of teaching and learning and look to the next 100 years of, I have to grab my clicker. Learning, growing, making a difference, and celebrating as a school community. This is the Proud Piper team. And this is also part of the Proud Piper team, and there's some more out there. All of our children and parents as well. Our school improvement team, though, is made up of educators from district leadership, classroom teachers, coaches, social workers, interventionists, principals, and support teachers. Some of the perspectives we represent are of everyday instruction, MTSS, English learning, social emotional learning, and more. So I will go ahead and take this opportunity to introduce the team. So Kathy Paoli is a reading interventionist at Piper. She has worked with some of our children to make sure they learn how to read and get their foundational skills for many years. Ms. Carla Schwartz is a 5th grade teacher, also a proud member of the District 100 team in more buildings than just Piper over the years. Gladiola Mendez is a D-100 graduate, returned to Piper School as an EL teacher, one of our newest staff members. Ms. Elise Ivetic is also a D-100 grad, back to Piper School. I think she was in Persian. Irving. Irving, okay. Irving Eagles. And now a Piper Bear. Ms. Michelle Maggus has been with us for several years, first as a 1st grade teacher and now as an EL teacher. And Jackie Carstens is our assistant principal. At Piper, we believe that through our collective actions, we can positively impact instruction and learning, leading to student success. When looking at data, we consider data about the whole child and reflect on our educational practices and instruction. Data trust within the team ensures that our data analysis is always a collective process for learning, challenging, identifying strengths and opportunities for growth. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Carstens to give you some information about ELA.
Good evening. We're going to start by looking at our literacy goal at Piper. So, yeah, thank you. No, it's all right. All right. Looking at data this year can be a little bit tricky with the recalibration at the state level. However, some things always remain the same. We believe with focused instruction that we can make a positive impact. Last year, our results goal was that 40% of students would meet or exceed on IAR. Using last year's cut score, we met our goal at 41.46%, but using this year's cut scores and ratings, almost 62% of our students are in the proficient or above proficient range. So in order to determine this year's results goal, our team looked at growth that we've seen in the past, student cohorts, teacher feedback, as well as instructional reflection to determine our goals. This data snapshot shows that from year to year, we have seen an increase of about 12.73% and 10% on IAR/ELA proficiency. In order to set an aggressive goal, the team has determined that our goal for this year will be a 10% increase. Instructional focuses and indicators for our plan are written expression for grades 3 through 5 and foundational literacy skills, automaticity, and fluency for kindergarten through grade 2. Our results goal for the 25-26 school year is by 2026, 70% of our students K through 5 will be proficient or above proficient in ELA on IAR. Here are some examples of explicit instruction in action in our first and kindergarten classrooms. Living words, small group instruction with letters and sounds are two ways we are fostering automaticity of foundational skills in those primary grades.
As many of you know, I am not a fan of public speaking. I say that every time I public speak. But I had a great EL mentor that once told me, "You don't always get what you want, but you get what you need." So I need to tell you about the Piper story. Tonight, we will be, I would like to spotlight the work that we are doing on explicit instruction in writing in grades 3 through 5. Through shared teacher reflection, we indicated that the need for more explicit instruction in writing. With the guidance of our literacy coach, Amy Butler, our professional learning series enabled teachers to provide more explicit instructions during our amplified lessons, which is our reading curriculum, for those of you that do not know. Using strategies from the Writing Revolution 2 book, which is an amazing book. If you do not have it, get it. Our professional learning objective is to equip teachers with the knowledge, strategies, and tools to effectively teach and assess student comprehension through CER, which is claim, evidence, and reasoning writing in their classroom across content areas. The steps to accomplish this goal are, first, the teachers are working with students at the sentence level for 3 through 5. We are going back to basics. Next, instruct in sentence types, fragments, generating topic sentences, planning paragraphs, and using transitions to increase student understanding and skills at the levels of writing. One example is the 5th grade codex writing project, which I had the pleasure to work on with one of my EL students. 5th graders produce a historical manuscript, a codex, using the reading and research of the ancient civilizations of the Mayans, the Aztecs, and the Incas. In these snapshots, there's a codex right there at the top. You can't really see it, but yeah, that's it. That's my student. In these snapshots, 4th and 5th graders use the resources and amplify the D-100 graphic organizer for CER, again, that is the claim, the evidence, and the reasoning, and their writing revolution. So they have a writing revolution using the materials from that book to use in their folder. And you can see it right there, that purple folder. So they, all the 3rd and 5th graders have that same exact material, which is great because as teachers go in, we can use that same common language. Sorry, I lost my place. Ah, folder. And this school-wide single paragraph outline to answer the CER question, does Don Coyote intentions justify his actions? The Writing Revolution, during professional learning meetings, we continue to analyze student work using the district rubric to determine success and revise lesson plans based on student data and instructional reflections. And now our amazing math.
All right. Math, best part of the night. So the standards and mathematical practices guided by Number Corner and our Bridges curriculum, our resources are foundations for math. Our goal in the last school year was to have 40% of students meet or exceed on IAR math assessment. By the old cut scores, we were closing the gap at 31.71% who met or exceeded. Using the 2025 norms, we've actually exceeded our goal at 47% of our students in the proficient or and above proficient range. So while the data analysis seems more complex this year as it all changed, we are positioned to exceed our goal again next year. To determine this year's results goal, the team looked at achievement and growth over the years, student cohorts, teacher feedback, as well as instructional reflection to determine our goals and actions. When looking at our IAR math scores, these scores remain somewhat consistent across the years, and the team decided to make an aggressive goal of a 6% increase in student achievement this year. So with indicators of operations and algebraic thinking in grades 3 through 5 and number sense with automaticity in grades K through 2, our results goal is that by 2026, 53% of our students will be proficient or above proficient on math as measured by IAR. Our actions parallel those in literacy as we work on structuring lessons and data analysis of student work for instructional reflection and change. So, sorry, lost my page. So here you can see our students are, we're just celebrating our youngest learners. They're actually having their foundational skills in practice with hands-on different models and numbers while they're building those beginning stages of their number sense through counting, bead counters, as well as, you could see workplace games for Bridges. In this page, one of my favorite times of the day is Number Corner, and we can see our 3rd graders here. They have one teacher-led and one student-led Number Corner. And this builds both confidence in our students who have the discourse in math, but also focusing on all the mathematical practices. And they're modeling the fractional equivalency right here in this, as well as area and perimeter. Our math work in PLC Centers on Student Data and Analysis, which helps us understand the components of IAR math, which is computation, reasoning, and modeling. When analyzing student samples, we look at student performance levels determining instructional needs for the whole group and for individual students. Our SIP math team is developing next steps to strengthen lesson structure by using the Bridges Observation Guide with a focus on family involvement, vocabulary, and an attention to lesson structure in workplaces, Number Corner, and problems and investigations in order to deepen students' mathematical practices. I will now turn it to Gladiola Mendez to talk about our EL.
Hello. Okay, so I will be talking about our ELs this year. So this year, Piper is proud to report that we are rated as a commendable school. All of our subgroups are above 40%. Our targeted subgroup in the 2024 Illinois Report Card were our students who are English language learners, as their index was below 40%. Our goal was to get this group out of the targeted range above 40% and beyond. Our focus in this area increased these metrics by 30%. As a SIP team, we are engaging with the steps that were taken that produced this impressive gain. These moves included student goal setting, coaching and learning-to-learn skills, exposure to testing situations and formats, encouragement through recognition, and family partnerships. In this school year, we continue to work with EL students in these areas and are adding focused instruction and coaching on student goals during our win time. This targeted work with our EL students can be amplified in our building practices to ensure student success.
So at this time, before we recognize our students and our fantastic teacher, I would take any clarification questions or comments from the board?
I would just like to say that it's great to see that it's back up to commendable. It's just an account of the hard work that the staff has put in, so kudos to you all for that.
I agree. I congratulate you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For all the work that you all do.
I just have, I have a question. I'm sorry. This is like, this is probably impossible, but I know I heard about the change in the standards. Can you just give like a very short, like what changed about it? It's like a change in just the metric or the, could you just like kind of summarize it very briefly?
Sure. Dr. Sanders and the State Board of Ed, this year underwent a lot of work with the metrics to look at the standard. When you looked at the NAEP, N-A-E-P, which I can't use to find that acronym right now, but when you look at NAEP, that's a standardized test across the whole United States. When you looked at the state of Illinois, they scored significantly in the very top on the NAEP standardized test. Yet most of our students were falling in the below proficient range. And so Dr. Sanders wondered about this metric, especially because he was one of those students who had fallen in that range as a student. So they underwent a long study of what's going on with the norming of our tests, and new cut scores were determined. So when you look at them, there's a different cut score for 3rd versus 4th and 5th in math, but not in ELA. I think they're all, maybe each one's different in ELA. Those are all available on the State Board website, and I don't have them in the steel trap right now. But, so those changes did make it so that more of the students were in the proficient and above proficient range. They also changed from the categories of five categories down to four categories for the IAR test. Something interesting to note again is when you look at our results goals, it's for K through 5 students, but only our 3, 4, and 5 take that test. And when you're talking about our EL students and that designation, 3rd graders don't count in that sample because there's not a growth comparison, so only 4th and 5th graders are really looked at in the targeted designation that our EL students were part of. But again, this fantastic team, 30% growth in that subcategory, it's, I mean, really unheard of. So congratulations to our families for partnering with us, our students for their hard work, and all the staff.
Thank you very much for that explanation. That was very helpful.
All right. The moment we've all been waiting for. Drum roll, please. We now look to recognize the Piper students and one of the fantastic teachers for exemplifying our mission as we move into the next 100 years. The Piper mission is to facilitate diverse learning opportunities, enabling students to take risks, explore infinite academic possibilities, and achieve personal growth. So our first category is for innovation, and to this, we again look at our partnerships with our families. At Piper School, our PTO works to advance our mission. One example of this is the yearly T-shirt design contest. Students submit drawings of their design, which meet design requirements and symbolize our school. So we had two winners this year. So some of you might own the Piper wear, but this was designed by Elizabeth Garcia and this by Miguel Roca. Okay, it's a long winner. So Miguel is a quiet, respectful student. While he speaks softly, his artistic talent is amazing. His awesome design made the most amazing Piper spirit wear this year. Miguel's imagination and innovation was represented in his unique design. Come on up, Michael. Elizabeth Garcia, would you please come up? Elizabeth is a confident, eloquent young woman who knows exactly what she wants and never gives up on her goals. She always has insightful thoughts and ideas to add to discussion and challenges her peers to think outside the box. Elizabeth, just come stand by me while I say all these nice things about you. Elizabeth is an incredibly curious young lady. There is not a biography that she will not read and retains countless facts and pieces of information. She is also incredibly creative and a winner of our Piper School Spirit Wear Design Contest. She actually also, last year at the talent show, sewed a piece of clothing onstage and then wore it. So she's...
It was two years ago. It was two years ago when I was, I think I was in 3rd grade. I did sewing, and in 4th grade, I did singing and dancing.
So Elizabeth, you know, in addition to all these accolades, also received her certificate for innovation, and we are proud to recognize her here. Unfortunately, the student that I had chose had a family emergency, so he's not able to come today, so, but we'll still speak on him, and he's, I'm sure we'll watch it on video. And knowing the student, he will. I am proud to nominate Axel Arroyo for the D-100 Portrait of Graduate in recognition for his determination. Axel has demonstrated that he can accomplish his goals through hard work, perseverance, and a positive attitude. He set a goal to improve his writing skills and has grown into an exceptional, I get kind of choked up because he was one of my 1st grade students, too. No, sorry. An exceptional writer. In fact, his 5th grade codex project, which is one you saw earlier, will be used as a model for future classes. To reach this achievement, Axel learned to advocate for himself and to seek feedback and support when needed. His enthusiasm and joy for writing have inspired and motivated his peers. Actually, he's got a little group that like wants to work with him all the time. Axel's determination truly exemplifies the qualities we aim to nurture at all Piper
Okay. So Daisy has grown to enjoy school and shows up every day on time and ready to learn. She is eager to work with her teachers and has shown determination to engage with classwork, even if it feels a little hard. Daisy knows that she can do hard things. Even when she feels overwhelmed, Daisy does not give up and is the best student that she can be.
Come on up. Come on down. Right here. Front and center. Turn around so they can all see you. Literally, one of my favorite parts of my day is working with this young man. Jesus has worked in Tier 3 reading with me since the 3rd grade. He has made considerable progress because he always works hard, doesn't give up, and is open to suggestions, sorry, on how to improve. This is the best part. His mother made him read for 20 minutes a day the past two summers and has helped him immensely. So yay, mom! He is sweet and funny, and in a world where it is easy to give up when things are difficult, Jesus does not have that in him. He is positive and celebrates his own successes, no matter how small they may seem to others. He also has the ability to bounce back quickly when he struggles, and it is this attitude and determination that has helped him to grow stronger in his reading. Everyone grab your hanky because it's Ms. Schwartz's turn.
I need to grab the hanky. It's not a Kleenex commercial, though, so I should be good. Although, it's early. Come on, turn them around so they can see how cute you are. So if you look up determination and perseverance in the dictionary, this young man's picture, oh geez, here I go. This young man's picture would be there. Oh my God. I know, sorry. When he doesn't understand something, he's never, not afraid to ask. He's gone from being very timid and retreating in his shell to actually seeking help. And there is nothing better than seeing this face light up when he gets it. So his continued desire to improve, his continued desire to succeed and work at things that are difficult to him is just a delight to see. So, so proud of you. So proud of you, Logan.
And the Piper staff is delighted to highlight one of Piper's treasures, one of D-100's treasures. Nancy Navatchek has been a teacher in the district for 28 years?
36.
36 years. I've only known... 36 years. I've only known her for four of those, and she is one of the most fantastic teachers that has been in this district. Did you hear that number? 36 years. Ms. Navacek still makes learning fun every day. You'll hear about some things that the kids say, but, I mean, I'll just say rubber chicken, and you'll have to find out more about that later. But tonight, we would like to honor and recognize a Piper treasure. Nancy is a veteran teacher that knows her stuff, knows her students, knows what they need, and definitely knows how to get it done. She is an awesome colleague, friend, and stellar teacher. Who's had Ms. Navacek for a teacher? One, two, not Elizabeth. Okay. Elizabeth, you didn't have her? Okay. Ms. Grimes. Nancy is a very kind and caring coworker who is always available for advice or just to chat. You always leave her feeling better about yourself. She knows how to meet her students where they are and make sure that they make consistent progress. Her expectations are high, and she is able to guide her students to reach their potential. Her teaching style is so conducive to learning as she builds a safe and loving environment for her students. She has a calming presence that benefits many of her students by making them feel ready to learn. Every student she teaches grows so much personally and academically because she is so dedicated. Her content knowledge is next level, and she always uses best practices in her instruction. Nancy works tirelessly, not only during the school year, but all summer long, to be the most prepared and knowledgeable teacher. Nancy inspires her students and colleagues to be the best they can be. Nancy is the epitome of dedication and getting the job done with an effort and diligence each and every task deserves. So those were some things that her teammates had to say about her. But here's from the kids. Our third-grade teacher, Mrs. Navacek, is truly caring, helpful, and respectful. She fills every day with kind, thoughtful, and loving moments. She is, she's as beautiful on the inside as she is awesome and cool in the classroom. Her patient, graceful way of teaching makes learning exciting, while her cheerful, friendly spirit creates a peaceful, pleasant place to grow. She is hardworking, passionate, and always considerate, a truly delightful, stylish, gracious, sweet, and absolutely wonderful teacher. Simply put, she is superior in every way. So please welcome or please join us in recognizing Mrs. Navacek. I'll just take this moment to thank the Board of Education. Happy Board of Education Month. Dr. Havas and our directors for welcoming us to Spotlight Piper School.
Thank you. And I want to congratulate every student present and not present, in addition to congratulate all the staff, the families, for supporting our students in our community. Ms. Navacek, congratulations. Thank you. 36, that's more than one-third of the history of Piper. So thank you all for all your support. I know my children were, were your students, so thank you many, many years ago. Le quiero felicitar a los estudiantes, a los padres, a las familias por apoyar a sus hijos. Gracias por continuar su apoyo a los, a los educadores de la escuela Piper por apoyar a los estudiantes y a los niños de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias.
I know. Congratulations again to our very determined, is the word of the night, students and staff from Piper. We are very proud to hear your story tonight. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to another recognition tonight, which is to our Board of Education. So School Board Members' Day was this past Saturday, November 15th, 2025, to recognize the hard work of our Board of Education. So there is a resolution that I will read regarding our board. So whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children, and whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and prudent expenditure of tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust, and whereas school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students, requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts, and employs district staff to carry out the day-to-day duties of educating students, and whereas school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership, and employ a superintendent to administer board policy, and are responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy, and school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours to public service with no compensation, and school districts face constant challenges, and the strong, dedicated leadership provided by the Berwyn South Board of Education has allowed students to succeed and flourish. And employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members, generously lending support and time. Employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of school districts and communities they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life and safety in their communities, placing them at the front line of local democracy and governments, therefore be it resolved by Berwyn South School District 100 that we proclaim November 15th as School Board Members' Day as a way to honor those who devote their time and energy for the successful education of all children and future leaders. So we want to thank and recognize all of our board members. We have a small token of our appreciation and a gift for all of you, and we appreciate all you do for our school district. Thank you.
I want to equally thank you, Mary. Thank you for the kind words. Thank you, board members. Thank you for being here. I know that it's, it's a volunteer job, and I know that it's in addition to all your regular jobs. So I really appreciate, I think, I, in my last, over 127 Wednesdays that I've been here, this is a very good board that I'm very proud to work with. So thank you. I appreciate every single one of you.
All right. In a minute, we're going to move on to our Illinois Report Card presentation. Everyone is welcome to stay for the meeting, but we also understand if little ones need to get home to bed. So it's up to you. I wanted to give you the opportunity if you do need to go, and we will start in about a minute at our next presentation. All right. We are going to go over our Illinois School Report Card presentation. As you all know, there is so much information on the Illinois School Report Card. You could probably spend hours sorting through all of the information about schools. So this is a highlight, but it is available for anyone to access. And as, you know, Corin asked a great question earlier, because for the next, for this year as well as next year, we're going to be in for kind of a lot of change coming to us from the state level. We, this year, we had the, the adjustment in cut scores, which, as Eileen talked about. When the state recalibrated all of the scores, what was noted at the state level is many of the scores in ELA and math were raised. But science, the cut scores were actually set too low, and so those actually came down a bit. So we're kind of on this new, even playing field with our scores. And so, you know, it's going to be something that resets this year, and then we'll be able to monitor that growth based on the new scores after this year. We will also have changes coming next year to the way that the school designations are calculated. Those should be finalized likely by January or February at the state level, so that is also going to change. So I'll touch on that a little bit. That one didn't impact this report card. So essentially, there's quite a bit within the Illinois Report Card that just gives that general overview of the district. So you can see that we continue to, you know, be on a downward trend in general. We had, you know, we increased by four students last year from the previous year. But, you know, we are kind of starting to stabilize there, where we were seeing that general decrease for the past several years. Our student demographics have made, have stayed very similar from last year, with 84% of our, our students Hispanic, and we have, oh, I can't read that very well, 8% white, 5% black, a very small Asian population, and two or more races. And then you can also see kind of the characteristics of our, our students. We have at 75.2% low in, low income, 31% English learners, 15.4% students with IEPs, 1.7% homeless, 5.7% student mobility, which is actually down a bit, and then 92.1% is our average daily attendance. We'll come back to the attendance piece. You could probably remember at, at a time, if you've been in the district a long time, that our goal for attendance was 97%. And it's become a very big challenge across the state, mostly after COVID, with the chronic absenteeism really increasing across the state as well as in our district. So it's something that we are working on every day to get out there the information about the importance of school attendance. Our teachers, this information has stayed relatively consistent. The number of certified teachers, 55% with master's degree or higher. We do have three national board certified teachers, three gifted endorsed teachers, 3% on a short term or provisional license, and ratio 15 to 1. That does not necessarily mean that all of our classrooms are only 15. It just means the number of students and teachers, you know, teachers can be also considered EL teachers, which wouldn't necessarily impact the, the class size. Our average teacher salary, we've continued to, with the, you know, support of the Board of Education over the years, really tried to continue to invest in our teachers. So we have, you know, gone up over the years. You can see that bigger jump in '22, '23 when we kind, we made some adjustments to our salary schedule. You know, we still have a little bit of a gap between us and the state, but that kind of goes over the average salaries. Our teacher retention, which has been a strong focus of the Board of Education and all of us for the past several years, we continue to see that nice growth in teacher retention and getting pretty close to the state retention level. I believe the state's at 89%, but we have continued to retain teachers, which we know has such a positive impact on students when our, when our teachers are consistent in our schools. So this is what I talked about earlier, is that chronic absenteeism piece. Chronic absenteeism is the percentage of students who miss 10% or more of school days, so essentially about 17 days of school. So we have 27.3% of our kids who missed more than 17 days of school last year. So we, we were making some headway, and then we kind of fell off again. The state is at 25.4%, so you'll note that this is a statewide issue. You, you may often see communication from the Illinois State Board of Education about really trying to focus on this across the state. And so we are continuing to focus on that in our schools. I'm sure that you see in the newsletters and a lot of information going home and, and really highlighting when we are having attendance. Obviously, if children are sick, we want them to make sure they're feeling well to come back to school. But we really want to place that emphasis on how important it is to be in school consistently. We have seen really great data around our school, our student discipline. You know, obviously, we've done a lot of work on restorative practices and really working with students around with our PBIS supports. So this data has only been available for the last couple of years, but you can see the growth from 2023, which is on the bottom, to 2025. So in 2023, we had 293 incidents that required suspension. Last year was 111, and the number of students has also decreased by almost 50% of students who were suspended in school or out of school between, over that two-year period. So as the board knows, we continue to monitor this data very closely and really focus on that when students make mistakes at the age of elementary and middle school, that it is a time for us to help them learn about that mistake and, and talk through and, and reflect on how that can change. So that is something that we continue to focus on in our schools. This is our student with IEPs. Obviously, our goal is to have inclusive learning environments. You can see on the left that we have 65% of our students who are in the general education classroom, 80% or more of the day, as compared to the state average of 54. And you can see each of those areas is the amount of time that students would spend in a general education class or in a separate facility. And so that, those go downward there, and you can see District 100 on the left and the state comparison on the right. This is our English learner exit rate, which is measured by access. So we were at 8.2% last year. The state was at 7.1. You know, we're getting ready for access again, coming up here pretty soon. So continuing to make sure that we really create environments where kids can be successful and, and really grow in their language throughout their years in our district. This is our early learning kindergarten readiness, the district as compared to the state. So you can see that overall kindergarten readiness is measured once they start kindergarten. And you can see particularly, and this is an area you'll notice district-wide, math is our lowest area here, starting in that kindergarten readiness, and it's our area of greatest need in our district. So we're really continuing to invest in that math. As you may have heard, the state is also coming out with a numeracy plan, which is very similar to, a couple of years ago, they did the literacy plan. So the math in general is a statewide push as well because statewide, we're not seeing the, the amount of growth in math that we're seeing in ELA, and we're seeing that same trend here as well. So this is our overall district proficiency as compared to the state. So in ELA, this year, we're at 46.4% proficient or meeting or exceeding. Math is 34.4, and science is 37.1. So, you know, we're So, you know, we're just under the state in all of those areas. So you, as you heard Piper talk about tonight, really taking this data and setting new goals for us for this year to make sure that at, at each school and then district-wide, that we're setting goals to continue to see growth in these areas. Our growth percentile, what we want to see is it to be above fifty and even more above fifty. So this, we were, we were just slightly over ELA and slightly under in math. So we really wanna see that growth percentile getting better, because that's gonna help with our proficiency. Financial-wise, you can see our evidence-based funding continues. We started off as a Tier One district, meaning that we were getting more funding in EBF each year. That started to slow down, as you can see. So you can see those numbers there as compared to the adequacy target, meaning to have the, the amount of money that we should be receiving to, to successfully serve our, our students. That puts us at eighty percent adequacy, which is really an exciting number. Now, we want to be at a hundred percent adequate, but we started, if you remember, at forty-six percent adequacy in two thousand seventeen. And so that we have gotten to eighty percent is amazing. And we are a Tier Two district now, meaning that the additional evidence-based funding on top of the base funding minimum gets to be a little bit less as you get into those higher tiers. But we are very proud and with the support of the Board of Education that we have really made great strides in fulfilling the evidence-based element recommendations for how many social workers we should have, how many interventionists we should have, how many coaches we should have. Those were put out back in two thousand seventeen to say the most successful schools should have staffing in these areas. And we have continued to invest in those areas to make sure that we have the staffing levels that we need. Obviously, we're not at a hundred percent funding, so we're not perfect, but we've really gained in all of the areas that the state recommends as far as ensuring that we're meeting the needs of our kids. So in a couple of months, you'll get more information from me about how we can keep advocating our district. They, every year, we hear from state agencies that we always know Borough and South is gonna come through with all of the letters and the witness statements about you've gotta keep investing in EBF. And I think without that push, right, these kinds of things can go away. And so we want to keep advocating for our kids, because they deserve to have a hundred percent funding. So I mentioned earlier the state accountability system. This is what it looks like now. So you have the academic indicators and the school quality indicators, which this has been consistent for the past several years. So they measure it by ELA growth and math growth is twenty-five percent each. Proficiency in ELA and math is seven point five percent of your score. Science proficiency is five. EL progress to proficiency is five. School quality indicators, that is the one, that chronic absenteeism one is hurting us in every area. And then the climate survey is that the students are taking that survey. So the fact that chronic absenteeism counts for twenty percent of the school quality indicators has been a significant challenge for school districts. They are starting to begin to talk about the proposed changes to this for next year, and that will not be as significant in that way, which is a really good news. But it could help us get better. It can be an elevator, meaning that if you have a score and then your chronic absenteeism improves, it could raise your score. So it can't hurt us in the future, but it could help us get better. So that's something we're gonna keep paying very close attention to, because while it's not gonna count necessarily as twenty percent of your score, it's still gonna be really important to us in the future. But this is what it's currently based on for this year's Illinois Report Card. As it's the same as last year, these are the potential summative designations. The current designations to be an exemplary school, you can only, you have to be in the top ten percent of the whole state. And it's capped, meaning only a certain number can be in that. That's also going to change in the future, because there's been frustration around that, because really, the only way you can get in there is if somebody else drops out. And so there's gonna be some changes around that. But these are the current summative designations. And for this year, we have six, sorry, seven commendable schools, and Pershing is a targeted school for this year. And similar to what we learned about Piper last year, is this is looking at specific subgroups. So in the summative designations, if you have a subgroup that did not meet the expectations, then you're a targeted school. So when we particularly look at Pershing, what I wanted to showcase is, on the left, is those overall index scores. So those are the subgroups that Pershing has. Last year, they did not have a subgroup with students with disabilities, because you have to have twenty students to count in that subgroup. And so you can see that those index scores in all of their other areas are quite, quite good. Sixty-six point eight, sixty-six point seven, sixty-seven point three five. So those are all of their subgroups. But you can see with the students with disability, that overall score was thirty-four point three nine, which puts that into the targeted area. So I highlighted in orange there kind of the three areas that Pershing will focus on with this particular subgroup, and frankly, school-wide, right? As we learned with Piper, the things that you're putting in place to support a, a subgroup is going to support all students. So those are the ELA proficiency, the ELA growth, and then the chronic absenteeism in that particular subgroup was also an area. And all of those things count for each subgroup. And so if you, so each of those points lead up to that final one. So of all those areas, those are the three that need to be targeted, which the process will be very similar to what we saw Piper work through and really focus on those sub, subgroups and that, or that subgroup. And then it will be re-measured again next year. And we are very confident that we will see a similar result to that popping right back up as we saw with Piper. And I'm gonna turn it over to Bee, who's gonna kind of relate this a bit to our overall district improvement.
All right, thank you very much. We follow in our district what is known as a smart school improvement process. It is research-based. It comes from researchers O'Neill and Conciemus. And they look at goals that are smart, so specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. And so you can see in our goal, we have, in terms of specificity, we're focusing on fluency and automaticity district-wide in grades K to two, and focusing on informational text and comprehension in grades two to eight. So that's our specific. We measure it by looking at resources like Teaching Strategies Gold or assessments like Teaching Strategies Gold, Fastbridge Early Reading in Spanish and in English, literacy skills and lectoescritura units in our assessments, our NWEA in Spanish and in English, and our Common Summit of Assessments. In terms of the primary measure that we are using is the IAR literacy performance, right? Like, that's where we're targeting. Our goal is achievable in the sense that, based on the current reality of forty-six point four, our district identified concrete instructional indicators that were aligned to those assessments to target the skill growth that is needed to make that goal attainable. In terms of relevant, literacy is a foundational district priority. We selected the indicators that are going to directly support students' reading development across grade levels. And you've seen this image, as you've seen some of our presentations, our literacy tree diagram, that shows the logical pathway from a broad goal to a results goal, to the indicators and the measures, and that ensures the alignment across the board. It is time-bound in the sense that we are saying that we are going to meet this goal by two thousand twenty-six, and the district aims for fifty-one percent of students to meet or exceed literacy expectations on IAR by the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In terms of math, something very, very similar. You'll see the specificity here, where we focus on number sense in terms of foundational skills in kindergarten first, automaticity in that foundational numeracy, and operations and numbers and operation in base ten in second grade and, and also across those early grades. Math constructed responses for second through eighth grade, we are focusing on those. And we break that down even further by looking at second through fourth grade, focusing on operations and algebraic thinking and numbers and operations and fractions. In fifth grade, looking at number and operations and fractions and numbers and operations in base ten. And in sixth through eighth grade, ratios and proportional relationships and expressions and equations. And so those are very specific areas that we are targeting. Again, measurable in the sense of we look at Fastbridge Early Math in the younger grades and NWEA in Spanish and English in our second and above. We also look at Common Summit of Assessments to address these goals. And this year, we are looking at IAR released items and administering those to our students and analyzing the work that comes out of that. So our primary IAR math performance, again, achievable. Our current reality being at thirty-four point four percent. And the district, again, we've identified some concrete instructional indicators that are aligned to the assessments to target that skill and that growth. Again, it's relevant. It is our district's second foundational priority. And again, we go back to, we have the broad goal, the results goal, the indicators, and the measurable to demonstrate that alignment. It is time-bound as well, because we are saying that by two thousand twenty-six, we're gonna reach that target of thirty-eight percent of students who meet or exceed the goal on IAR, on the IR assessment. And so some of the actions that we've looked at in terms of how are we addressing these goals, we identified, we're administering, and we're analyzing those common district improvement assessments. So implementing that cohesive set of assessments district-wide, monitoring the progress towards our goal. And that includes selecting certain aligned measures that are ensuring that consistency across the board and across schools. So we're looking at it, we're looking at dashboards, you know, whenever they are administered, and using that results data to guide instructional planning and intervention. And they're doing that specifically in the classrooms. We are integrating the claim evidence and reasoning of writing tasks in grades three through five in math. Again, to strengthen students' mathematical thinking and communication, grades three through five will incorporate these writing tasks. And that practice builds students' ability to think, reason, like, to reason with math, to justify some of their problem-solving, and they're using evidence to support their mathematical claims. Our PLCs are professional learning communicate, communities at, at each grade level. They're analyzing and they're identifying targeted instructional areas to address some of the learning gaps that they're seeing when they're looking at some of those results. They're routinely doing this. They're analyzing data. They're determining what instruction needs to happen so that we can address some of these needs. And then in PLCs, they're selecting formative assessments, so that they're not just waiting until the end of the unit assessment or the district common assessment. They're saying, how can we start looking and taking like that little pulse, you know, of how students are doing across the board? And then we have been integrating our dual-language collaboration with our dual-language teachers. They come together, you know, quarterly, our kindergarten teachers. And our EL teachers are coming together quarterly to look at instructional strategies. Same with our coaches. They're coming together and seeing, how can we collaborate across the district to support the students that we are serving? And that is our report.
Any questions from anyone?
I do, sorry, thanks. Can you talk a little bit about the PLC structure at the district level? And then also, what is the PLC structure at the individual school level?
Certainly. So all of us have gotten trained, administrators and teachers alike have gotten trained on professional learning communities through an organization that looks at really structuring an agenda, right? Where we start with setting norms, setting purpose, setting non-purpose, establishing those, those, kind of like those data rules, so that we say, you know what? We're talking about data, but we're not talking about you. We're talking about this data that's coming out, that the students are producing. So really having that be nonjudgmental. During the PLCs, they, you know, obviously, they set their agenda. They're looking at student work. They're saying, okay, here is the work that we're looking at, that we've all administered. They're analyzing it. They're talking about it. They're identifying, you know, the, the four PLC questions, you know? What are the students learning? How do you know that they learned it? And how are you gonna, you know, address the needs that have not been met? Looking at that and then identifying next steps for instruction, so that they can take action on what they've just looked at in their classroom. And then they close it, you know, they always evaluate how their meetings went, meeting norms. And, and so that structure is prevalent across the district, across the schools.
How often are, are those occurring at individual schools? What's the cadence like?
So weekly, weekly during their common planned times that they have. In some cases, they'll look at literacy, they'll look at math. So that is, that is a weekly occurrence across all the buildings.
At the individual school level, are coaches or other discipline-specific leadership present?
Yes, if they're available. So, yeah, so some, most of the time, I mean, we only have three math coaches for the entire district, so that hinders their availability. We have two bilingual coaches across the district. The literacy coach is there, so for a literacy meeting, for example, they would be there. They would be present and guiding, especially in the PLC conversations. But then they are also in the classroom, providing that support to classroom teachers. So in terms of PLCs, a lot of them are available, especially if they're the literacy coach.
And would you say that administrators make themselves available to attend PLCs regularly or?
They do. So they, one of the things in some case, when we first started this, it was administrator-led, just because everyone was learning a process. And now it has become a little bit more of shared ownership by the teachers. But it is where the administrator is sitting there, is looking at student work. Mary and I attend, you know, as much as we can. And sometimes we invite ourselves, sometimes we're like, oh, you're having PLC. Like, that brings joy to our hearts, to see teachers in action, talking about student work. The administrators are there, and they're supporting, guiding, maybe asking a question. It is teacher-led, but they are there asking some of those questions that might, you know, kind of push them a little bit, because we know in, in a school, there are multiple PLCs taking place. And within that school, there, everybody's at different, you know, levels of proficiency, even in their PLC structure. So there is some support that takes place through the administrators.
How new, like, how new is this? Well, you see, you've got a protocol, you've had training. How new is that? Like, in recent years or last year?
I'd say four to five years.
Four to five years old.
At least. We've been doing that, and so now it's, now it's a flow. So four's solid, right? Now it's a flow. Now it's like, this is our structure. Here is the template for the PLC agenda, and so this is, that's just the cadence.
Okay, thanks.
I, I guess, follow up on one of her questions. You said that they meet weekly in a PLC. Is it only once a week to discuss all the subjects?
Their literacy and math. So that's what they have in, in terms of their common planned time. They have a seventy-minute common plan, and that's when they can meet.
But it's only once a week?
Correct.
For that two, okay, thank you.
Now, in middle school, they can meet more often, because they do have a variety of those things. And so in middle school, you will see that a little bit more often, because they do have a team plan. a team plan. And so, you know, but sometimes that's content or sometimes that's, you know, MTSS related or, so it varies.
Thank you.
I have a question. I hope it's not a loaded question. The question is, is can you give me, or can you give us an example of how like MTSSB or SEL is embedded, intentionally embedded into, let's say PLCs? Or if there, if it shows up in another way that's on a weekly or regular basis in curriculum planning, as part of the curriculum planning?
So I'll have to get back to you on that with some more specificity because it's specifically talking about, are they talking about those things during their PLC? I can't speak to that in the planning meetings that I've been at. We do have a process for MTSS and for progress monitoring and problem solving through our, obviously through our MTSS framework, falling under our PBIS umbrella. So PBIS, universal, that team is talking about, you know, universally what's happening across the board on a monthly basis at a tier two or tier three, looking at subgroups of kids, you know, who may be needing additional support. I don't know if those conversations happen during the, like the work analysis or anything like that, just because of the time. But we can definitely get back to you with more specificity on that.
Thank you, yeah, that's, that's more than fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caballero. I wanted to give feedback as far as this slide. I think it's great that you are, I feel like every month, these presentations have gotten more specific or with more clarity for me. So I really appreciate the slide that has, you know, like the action plan, like what are you going to do, rather than just identifying which assessments you're going to use to measure, right? Now, so I really like this slide. That being said, I noticed, you know, the first bullet point, the second bullet point, and then the fourth bullet point are all talking about selecting those assessments. Which tools are we using to, you know, the task, what, so the what, right? And then bullet point number three and, and the last one talks about instruction and instructional strategies. So I, I feel like we're getting there, or at least in terms of understanding for myself. Those two bullet points that talk about instruction and instructional strategies are getting to the how. Because I guess the point I want to make is, if you've had these PLCs for four years and you've been doing the four questions, but nothing's changing, then we need to change something, right? We need to change the how of how are we doing this teaching? How are we doing this instruction? Where can we change our approach in order to get those results? It's, it's, I, I have a good feeling that we're going to be able to make a lot of growth. And as a board member, I appreciate you shedding light on this. I encourage you to continue to think about the how and not just the what. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you for that. We have certainly, like, we started this four years ago with our PLC process. Within that time, we've adopted a new literacy resource. And so that's going to take a little bit of time for our teachers to gain their expertise in the way that that's taught. We transitioned from a very balanced literacy model to a more structured literacy model. And so that is going to take a little bit of time for the teachers to get that how. But it is definitely something that we are constantly working on and continue to work on and will continue to be embedding as our teachers gain more of that expertise with some of the resources that, that we've integrated into their toolbox. Thank you.
How long have we had our math curricula now? Bridges at the elementary level, right? Like?
Yeah, we started in 20, we adopted it, I think, 2019, 2020. And so we adopted 2019, 2020, but then we went on pandemic. And so it was very challenging to really engage in that resource with fidelity, probably for the first year or two, just because it's not like a regular adoption. Like with literacy, I could tell you, our teachers are there, they're getting it, they're reading it, you know? When we adopted the math, we, I mean, that very year in March, we went remote learning. And then for the next like two years, we were really struggling with remote learning. And so that was challenging. It is definitely something that is always on our radar to see, what are they doing? How are they doing it? How are the students, like math? I mean, I walk into math, math classrooms constantly. They're like, oh, she's here again.
So like hitting our stride a little bit more now, maybe, right?
Yes, to see like some of that. But it is something that, you know, we, we do have as, just like we did with literacy, we do have a process for adoption. So starting to look at, okay, well, what's everybody else doing, you know, like in the surrounding areas and just across the state? And then looking at, okay, well, you know, when can we bring maybe a team together to look at some of these things? So it's always there. It's just, we don't want to throw too much at our teachers at once.
And the state numeracy plan will be coming out as well, which may provide more guidance, excuse me, around that.
It makes me think about, like, what are the structures for like data collection around the PLCs and like accountability pieces for teachers? Do they submit, like what they've worked on or any kind of like outcomes they have that all live somewhere that someone else has oversight over?
So at the district level, we collect a specific district common assessment across all the units. At the school level, they also collect things that go along with their school improvement plans. And so that lives in there. Like ours lives in, in our dashboard, everybody has access to it, we can see it, we look at it, we're like, how are they doing? Okay, they just administered, okay, they're not entered, this school hasn't entered yet, let's look at it. So we are looking at it. And then like this week, we're engaging in data meetings with each of the schools. So our team of teaching and learning team is going out to each school and meeting principal, assistant principal or, and other team members if, if they elect to, to have them again during the day. It's hard to release people. But we are meeting with them and they're showing us and telling us, here's the data that I'm tracking, here's how I'm tracking it, here's what we're doing, here's, you know, where our school improvement goal is. And so we are, you know, monitoring that because we, it's, we want our kids to learn.
Yeah.
Can I say something now? The PLC, can you please go to the document?
Do you mind going to the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you.
Sorry, guys. I, we all use the same, essentially the same PLC document.
Can you wait until you get?
No, I understand. No, sure. I understand that there's a protocol for PLCs.
I, I just understood it as you were asking about our PLCs and like, is it, are we tracking that information of what's happening in our PLCs? Or did I misunderstand?
No, no, that's correct. And I know that Lindsay and others look at that data and all that.
Yeah, and it, what was really helpful is the planning that they did, or the training that they got us. We all took the, the essential plan for our PLCs and just tweaked it a little bit, I think at each building. And we essentially are looking at the same information in all of our PLCs. So it's kind of nice because we are all talking and having the same conversations at our schools just around different things. And everybody's, those are all, you're all able to see our PLC conversations and documents. Sorry, I think I misunderstood the question. That's why I wanted to speak to it.
And then as far as like data analysis, how much of that is lifted by teachers themselves? Like are teachers having to do a large amount of data analysis or is it mostly higher up like a level?
They're doing it to gather as a team.
On the ground in the PLC, so.
So sometimes, and the, the cadence varies by school and by, you know, depending upon what they're working on. Sometimes they might grade it independently and bring it to the PLC. Sometimes they might be grading in the PLC and then analyzing it right then and there. So it just, it varies, but they are doing it, the analysis is together.
And then kind of thinking about what Board Member Caballero was saying, like what, is there a, a system in place for feedback? Feedback loops, like are teachers doing it? Are they liking it? Is it working for them? Are we collecting any kind of feedback from them about the experience itself with the PLCs?
They, I feel like they are in the building, like in that moment in time. We have not asked for it yet. But that doesn't mean that it's not, you know, something that might be coming. But we haven't done that yet because we are implementing specifically the, hey, here's the common assessment that we're also collecting and tracking. So again, we want to do it in steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have another question I've, that I forgot to ask. In one of the slides, there was the NWEA, Spanish and English. So I'm wondering if the dual language students, do they take the assessments in both languages or only one?
In literacy, they do take it in both languages, just because that is the language of instruction. In math, it varies by grade level. So in K to 2, they'll take it in Spanish, in 3 and above, they'll take it in English. And that has to do with the language allocation plan that we have.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there is like a similarity in the, in the, in the reports, how they, what is it, their strength? So, thank you.
Yes, so in, in regards to the reports and things and tools that we have available in NWEA, they have the same reports in Spanish and in English, and so they can compare those. And one of the things that our dual language teachers are very often looking at is, where is the language that they need more support in? And in which ways can we bridge what they have in one language to that other language?
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thanks.
All right. All right, thank you. Thanks, Bea. And I'm going to turn it over to Jenny for a quick review of the levy.
Thanks. I will be very, very brief, very quick. Just recap from last month. Levy consists of two parts, which is the operating levy, which you're approving this evening, and the other is the bond levy, which is set by the bond schedule. Okay, I do like this new one. This is very cool. So these numbers have not changed from last month. We just received, I know everybody just received their tax bills, I'm sorry. But I also know that, we also just received our final tax levy from '24. So the levy that was approved last year in November, we just got finalized this week. And these numbers have not changed. What I would like to point out though is, the bond levy between 2024 was 3.7 million and the bond levy for 2025 is roughly 2.8 million. So we're bringing that bond levy way down, even though on the board agenda tonight, there are two resolutions to adopt to restructure and, restructure the bonds and take out new bonds for the Kaminsky and Piper projects. What it does is, this is what it, this is what it essentially is doing. And it would become a savings overall in the bond portion of the levy to the taxpayers. We're able to take one of our series and refund it and refinance it and save a half a million dollars, which is fantastic. Half a million dollars. The other part is the 2.5 that we're taking out to do the, like I said, the Kaminsky and the Piper. This number is not set yet because the bonds have not sold yet. But you can see roughly that green line that goes across is roughly at a 2.75, 2.8 range for the tax levy. That next bar down that goes straight across is our DECEB, which is our Bonding Authority up to our DECEB. And that little part that's above it, which is that kind of teal greenish color, is the life safety bonds that are layered on top of that. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
All right. We do have one FOIA this month that was submitted and sent to the board. The dashboard, again, you could note student attendance and enrollment numbers, as well as this month, our fall benchmark data is in there as well for the board's review. And I'll turn it back over to Jenny for a financial report.
Sure. Our bank balance as of today is 54,944. That includes 33.4 million that is in PTMA, which is the investment portion of it. Our revenue for the month of November is only 1.4 million, which will increase as soon as we start receiving taxes. If you look at the agenda, on the consent agenda, you'll see item B on the consent agenda says approved payment in bills of 5.5 million. That's just the bills for November of 5.5 million. So when you're looking at the bills of 5.5 million and our revenue for November is only 1.4, those bills don't include two payrolls. So our bills for November are very high. So we are very fortunate that we have a fund balance so that on rainy days like this, we are still able to make payroll and we are still able to keep our lights on and we are still able to make our bond payment, which is why our bills payable is so high this month, because there is a high bond payment. Our cash flow, which is above, for the month of October, you can see our revenue for the year-to-date is only 11 million. And our expenses for year-to-date is at 20.9 million, that's as of the end of October, for a fund balance of 54,700,000. And I believe that's the end of my report. Thanks.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Finance.
Today, we reviewed the bond structuring presentation that Jenny just gave, and that was all.
Thank you.
Yes, today we reviewed some policies for first reading. They are listed in the policy committee agenda that was posted, all the different numbers and the name of the policy. And it was a very quick meeting because there was not a lot of changes, other than like legal citations or statute numbers seems to be the only update there. So that was first reading, so we'll look at it again next month.
Thank you. Legislative report.
Yes. I would like to summarize that while the federal shutdown disrupted services, delayed benefits, and prompted court intervention, our state leaders are still advancing education work, including new AI legislation, cell phone policy pilots, and efforts to offset recent E-rate cuts. And we'll leave it at that until next month. Hopefully we'll have some new stuff.
Thank you. Correspondents?
We had three emails and one physical correspondence.
Thank you. 2025 resolutions, as you all know, we will be attending the Illinois Association of School Boards Conference this coming weekend. And we have a couple resolutions. Do we want, is, is there any resolutions or anything that anybody wants to bring up so we can discuss?
I'm sorry, did we decide who the delegate is?
Oh, yes, our delegate is Amanda Trent.
Okay, I forgot, sorry. I do. So I was looking at item number nine that talks about, I should pull it up, that talks about suspending, having to follow the constitution of the Illinois Association of School Boards in, in a state of emergency. And the Board of Directors is recommending that our delegate vote to pass it. And I just think that that's not a good idea and I would like our delegate to vote no.
Do you know what page that is?
I'm trying to pull it up.
Page 11.
12 or 11? Item number nine is on 11, correct? Is that the one?
11 and 12, maybe? Let's see.
Page 11, correct?
Yes, sorry, page 11, Article 11 miscellaneous. Item number nine, new section seven, declared emergency. So this is new language that they want to put in, okay? That the Board of Directors may suspend or modify the provisions of the Constitution during an emergency declared by the governor or the president. And the rationale given is that they already did it during the pandemic.
And the rationale given is that, um, they already did it during the pandemic. So if they already did it, I don't understand why we need this language in our constitution. So, um, the whole point of me bringing that up is I would like our delegate to vote no on that. I, I'm sure it will pass because all of these they're putting in a consent agenda to just pass the consent agenda, which is what you do when you don't want to talk about individual items. Um, so it'll probably pass anyway, but I, I would like to vote no.
Any doubts? I am okay with whatever, uh.
I mean, I just think this is just codifying, like to your point, something that they were already doing. Um, I don't see the danger in, in voting yes on it. I guess I would like to hear from other board members on what they think.
Okay. Do any recommendations?
Ju- just to put it on the record, I don't, I'm not against it. Um, again, based on the current practices that are already happening.
Yeah, I mean, isn't it discussing making things on Zoom during COVID and things like that? I mean, we have to be, it seems like there could be many emergencies in our future that it's more helpful to be flexible than not, to be able to continue the business of running schools.
Yeah, agreed. And, and this is basically just allowing us to continue to do business in an emergency situation. Um, and, and to board member Trent's, uh, point, it's, it's just codifying it. It's just putting it in there that in the state of an emergency, that we can still continue to, the, the, the delegate assembly could still continue, that, that work still could, could, could still continue. So, um, I would, I would vote to, uh, that we do adopt that.
Okay. Well, in, um, yes, we have to remember that a resolution is basically a belief of what we're going to be doing. At the end of the day, our delegate is going to be, there's a lot of conversation going back and forth from different delegates. And at the times, there may be additional changes that may happen and at the end, um, so I will leave that to our delegate. Any other item? No? Okay, then I think we are done with resolutions and I am happy to see you all there, correct? Thank you. Um, let's see. Any public comments? Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlining board policy two, two thirty. Seeing none. Can we have, um, a motion to approve consent agenda? I'll motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? Yes. Can we, uh, can we have a discussion on, um, I, item D? Um, letter E, we need, um, can we remove it? Thank you. I, I, I'm motioning to remove it. Anybody?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, do we want to have any discussion on any other items? Okay, then can we go ahead again with a motion to approve without item D, letter E? I'll motion. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Irona, Trent?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Butler?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, do we have another one? I don't, three more, I can't see. I'm sorry, number three, number four. Okay, so we are going to adopt the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed four million seven hundred and fifty thousand general obligation limited, limited tax refunding school bonds for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection therewith and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Can we please have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Irona, Steinfeld, aye. Trent?
Aye.
Butler? Caballero?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to have, uh, another one. Adopt the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed two million five hundred seventy five thousand general obligation school bonds for the purpose of altering and reconstructing the school buildings and purchasing and installing equipment here, therein for fire prevention and safety, energy conserv- conservation and school security purposes, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Can we have a motion?
Caballero, I move said resolution, adoption of said resolution.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Irona, Butler? Palace?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Caballero?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Trent?
Aye.
Thank you. Adopt the resolution to authorize final aggregate tax levy for the year twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Irona, Trent?
Aye.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Caballero?
Aye.
Butler? Motion carried.
Thank you. Can we have, uh, public comments? Individuals appearing before the board are expected to follow the guidelines outlining board policy two, two thirty. Seeing none. Board member comments?
I have a really quick comment. Um, but since we're all going to the conference this weekend and we talked about evidence-based funding a lot tonight. Um, last year I went to a session, at, at summer, were you at that one with me? Yeah. And it was a panel about evidence-based funding and it was very interesting because it was urban and rural districts all in a panel. And it was very helpful to see that across the state, how important evidence-based funding is and how important it is to continue, especially now that there's funding shortages from the federal government. So if anyone sees that one and you want to go to it, I highly recommend. It was great last year and they usually do repeat some of them.
They do. Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I just thought it was very touching to see the, um, bench dedication at Piper School for Mrs. Sveck. I'm, I should have said this earlier, but when Piper was here, but, um, I don't know, I just like, I'd love that we, you know, commemorate lost staff in this way and, uh, and as a way to just sort of have a remembrance, a permanent remembrance of her. So I just wanted to say, it got me here. I was out of town for work. I would have been there otherwise, but thank you for doing that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Yes, I forgot to mention that, uh, that I saw that AOV is, oh, AOV, yeah. So I, uh, please thank them on our behalf. Any other comments? No? Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. I forgot. I should have said it. I got my green on. I forgot. Congratulations to Piper. Congratulations to Piper, um, School for, um, receiving the commendable status. I know, um, it's always hard, um, to get those, um, type of designations, um, that we had last year. Um, but definitely, uh, through your, uh, hard work, intentional work, collaboration and intense, um, brainstorming and problem solving, you guys made it through. So congratulations.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Can we please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second. Caballero?
Irona, Jimenez?
Aye.
Steinfeld, aye. Butler? Caballero?
Aye.
Trent?
Aye.
Palace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your week and have a wonderful Thanksgiving break.